Meeting is now called to order. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Trustee. Trustee Theo Brooks, present.
Trustee Sonia Jenkins-Bale, present.
Trustee Donzel Franklin, present.
Trustee Shirley Bolden, present.
Is, is trustee McMullin, signed in?
No, that's it.
Okay. Nor trustee Williams.
Trustee Williams, right.
Okay. Our village clerk, uh, oh, mayor.
Here, here, Madam Clerk.
I was clerk Dee Jones. Also with us is our attorney.
Joe Miller.
Our village manager.
Ernestine Beck Fogle.
Our director of community relations.
Keely Lewis Childress.
And I think we have a guest with us.
Well, my name is Sonia Coffee. I'm with CHW Management Group LLC. And I have some of my colleagues along with me, who will be Jerry Hammond.
Hi, everyone.
CEO PGA Pro. We have. Jerry Hammond, he's our CEO and our PGA Pro. Then we have Steve Reniker. He's our senior development strategic. We have Marcia Lee. She's our VP of Facilities and Management. And Jerry Thomas, Public Relations Director. He's trying to, oh, he's in. And then we have Deborah Roberts, who is our COO and out for this evening.
Okay.
Okay, before we get started, I'd like to read a brief statement.
Trustee, trustee Elizabeth Williams checking in.
Okay.
Trustee. Okay. Madam Clerk, pursuant to Governor Pritzker's Executive Order 2020-07 COVID-19, Executive Order Number Five, which suspends the requirement of the Illinois Open Meetings Act requiring in-person attendance by members of a public body during the duration of the gubernatorial disaster proclamation. The members of the village board will not be physically present for the designated board meetings, but will instead be participating in the meeting through audio access using a virtual meeting platform. Public comments may be submitted in advance of the meeting to the village clerk Dee Jones at DJONES@university-park-il.com or by text message to 708-473-6201. All comments must be received by 5:00 PM the day before the meeting. In order to give proper consideration to all items on this agenda, the mayor will limit participants in a debate and will close off protracted, repetitive, irrelevant, or abusive remarks. Public comments will be limited to a total of thirty minutes. Thank you. General public comments.
Pledge allegiance.
Oh, it's not pledge of allegiance.
Can everybody see the flag?
Yeah.
Okay.
Our pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance. Do the flag. Flag. Of the United States of America. To the Republic of which stands. One nation, under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first one. Any public comments, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I received one public comment by email sent yesterday at 4:54 PM. The. Somebody's feeding in. Uh, the comment is from Gina Williams. And she states, hi clerk Jones, my public comment questions are as follows. Does the gentleman that conducts the mayor's corner get paid for it? And if so, how much? I hear we may get a financial director or assistant for village manager. Where are we getting the money for it? The mayor had an American Express card given to him not long after being sworn in. Why are people being told he doesn't have a credit card? What happened to it? And I'd like to see those expenditures. Again, why does it take so long to receive a FOIA back? When were, she has your, but I know you all going to announce the village hall is reopened for business, seeing the marquee says we are closed due to COVID-19. Were there any recent settlements paid out? When will a regular board meeting resume with residents' participation? Thank you, Gina Williams. Sent on Monday, she has June ninth, but it was eight, at 4:54 PM. The second comment I did not receive directly. It was forwarded to me from our communications director, Nita Jenkins. And it's from Vivian Covington. She states, my questions are for Chief Wilson or village manager. Number one, is Chief Wilson still a member of the Southland Police Chiefs? Number two, is there a SOP, standard operating procedures in place to create, she has static meant, but I think she said she meant synthetic training measures for our officers for the type of climate that we are experiencing. Number three, after what is nationally being demanded of the police forces and making sure backgrounds are thoroughly looked at, will the criteria for recurring officers require them to be more strenuous in their selection? And will we be adopting those rules? That's it.
Mayor, do you want me to address the question?
Any response, any responses from anybody?
Yeah, I can answer, uh, I can answer, uh.
Go ahead, trustee.
Uh, no, it sounds like. Let me just say, uh, to answer, uh, what? Somebody, somebody.
We're getting a warning.
Yeah, I. Okay. That's mine. Okay, I'm sure everyone just got that tornado warning.
Yeah. Delta.
Yeah, okay, I can answer number three. Um, considering that I only just been away from the.
Number three, from whom?
Uh, I'm sorry, that would be from Covington. In reference to more strenuous background, I believe, I was trying to write it. String it more of a strenuous background for a new candidate recruit. Is that, did I hear that right, Madam Clerk?
Yes. No, I did, no, it said recurring.
Recurring?
Yes.
Okay. Well, let me, let me give just to say that I guess I'm assuming from what, um, that for that question, for those who are listening, and I have been very well paying attention to what has happening. I think President Obama has given guidelines and actually, like I said, I just chaired a police and fire commission just a little over three years ago. My vice chair took over. I'm assuming that she would follow the same protocol that the Illinois Police and Fire Commission Standards, uh, uh, commission had, um, association has trained us on. Uh, and that is indeed, um, the, the candidates, um, we have a extensive, Madam Clerk can tell you, because the bill, sometimes the bill comes, uh, that, uh, towards her, her office, but the, um, background checks, we do, um, extensive such as polygraph, psychological. Uh, and also as well, let me notate, um, because I, I'm assuming it stems from this incident with, uh, Mr. Floyd. Uh, and what happened when it comes to proper training, just so that the residents do know, the police and fire commission, we do check if an officer come from another department. I repeat, if an officer come from another department, the background check does consist of going to that department's internal affairs unit where they, uh, we are allowed to review all the, um, uh, the, the history of that officer. Um, at this point, I think the former president, in which he probably always be our president, but President Obama was correct, it does start with, um, uh, the local government. Uh, whenever an officer's in trouble, um, it, uh, they do have two options. They do come before us.
Oh, boy, that's the sirens.
That's, that's it.
Okay, so here's. So here's what you guys need to do. Um, for and due to an emergency, you can recon, yeah, you can reconvene. You, I would say you end the meeting, um, and we can try to reconvene it for a date certain. Is there a date certain that anyone that we can do this, say?
How about Thursday?
Thursday, we got something to do Thursday. Okay, my Thursday is clear.
Come, where you're dead.
Take a straw poll.
Come on.
I'm good.
Wait.
I got it. The day I want to come to the office to meet, we gotta have a damn, damn tornado.
Oh, okay, okay, man, you still recording?
So what I, if you guys, okay, if you're okay with it, then we would reconvene for a date certain Thursday at seven? Is that okay with everyone? Is that what the mayor suggested?
That, if that's, if it's concurrence with the board, that's, that Thursday works.
Okay.
Oh, John.
Oh, it is a corn. And? Will that work for you, Ms. Coffee? Would you be able to pull your team back together for Thursday?
She's muted.
Okay, so, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Thursday would work for you.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, it's coming, it's coming back around. Let me know. I'll make the motion to adjourn, man.
Is there a second?
Not adjourned.
Not adjourned.
No, the meeting's not adjourned.
Not adjourned, to suspend, to suspend, trustee.
It's, it's a repeat, the meeting will be reconvened Thursday at 7:00 PM on the open meetings day. You guys stay safe.
Okay. Motion to suspend, right?
Motion to reconvene, yes.
Is there a second? Motion by trustee Brooks, second by.
Guys, it's out.
I'll take favor.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye, aye.
All right.
Hurry in, there's a funnel cloud that was just seen and it's heading towards University Park.
This meeting is now called to order. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Williams.
Present.
Trustee Brooks. Trustee Brooks.
Present.
Trustee Jenkins-Bale. Trustee Bolden.
Present.
Trustee McMullin. Mayor Rudius.
Present.
Noting for the record, also present is.
I go Miller's now.
Sir?
You don't want to do that.
I'm gonna do Miller's now.
There you go.
Roll call, trustee.
All right, that sound better.
Are we ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Will the others announce themselves? Also present is our village manager.
I'm here. I'm Ernestine Beck Fogle.
Village treasurer. James Ellis.
Mute, unmute.
I'm asking him to unmute one second.
Okay, unmute, I'm okay now.
Okay. Our community relations director, Keely Childress.
Present.
Police chief, Deborah Wilson.
Present.
And a village attorney, Joe Miller.
I'm here, thank you.
And Sonia. Who, who, Coffee? Okay, is there anyone else? Okay.
I'm here.
Jerry Thomas is here.
Jerry Thomas.
All right.
Jerry Thomas?
Yes.
T H O M A S.
Correct.
Mr. Mayor, it's all yours.
Okay, as we left off, so we're item five A1, this is going to be a presentation from Mrs. Keely Lewis Childress.
Can I say something, Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, yep, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, may I say something, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Um, just for purposes of the public who are listening and for the purposes of the minutes, it'll be reflected this. This is the meeting that was reconvened at a date certain pursuant to the Illinois Open Meetings Act. The meeting was reconvened due to the, um, occurrence of a, a, a weather emergency and it was reconvened to today's date, um, at that time, so.
Very much, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, we in the Zoom meeting?
Point of order, Mayor, uh.
Okay.
I, I think we did, uh, come off of the, uh, meeting where there was a general comments that, or public comments that Madam Clerk had read off. I was in the middle of a statement in reference to, look at my notes here. Yes, sir, um, I, if, if I may, sir, can I just finish what I was saying? And I believe we have Chief Wilson here, so she can indeed, uh, answer those, answer the question, finish the question if Madam Clerk still had it to reread.
Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Uh, I was about to say, the questions were directed.
I got everyone frozen on the screen.
The question from Vivian Covington was directed to the police chief or, and/or the village manager.
Oh, that's what we, that's what the question was directed to?
Yes, in, in, in what she said. And shall I read the questions again since Chief Wilson is here?
Yes.
Okay, number one, is Chief Wilson still a member of the Southland Police Chiefs?
Normal.
Number two, is there a standard? Is there a standing operating procedure in place to create systemic training measures for our officers for the type of climate that we are experiencing? Number three, after what is nationally being demanded of the police forces and making sure backgrounds are thoroughly looked at, will the criteria for recurring officers require them to be more strenuous in their selection? And will we adopt these rules? That's directed to Police Chief Wilson and manager Beck Fogle.
Okay, uh. Mayor, Madam Clerk, can you hear me? I just got kicked out. I'm back in, I believe.
Yeah.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, all right, um, okay, yeah, uh, uh, Mayor, just to kind of finish off what I was saying in the last was that, um, in reference, it just to say on the police and fire commission side, uh, from what I last remember that was implemented by the Illinois Police and Fire Commission Association, uh, all, um, this, when it comes to the selection of the officers, there is indeed some, uh, background. There is indeed psychological. There is indeed, uh, several measures that are taken to try to ensure that, uh, our village and our commission does select a, uh, the best police officer or best candidate possible off the list, um, in reference to disciplinary.
Just froze.
He froze my mind as well.
He just, he froze temporarily. Um. He's just there for, he's just frozen.
Manager Fogle or Chief Wilson? While he gets unfroze, you want to respond?
Yes, the, the Fire and Police Commission, as you know, um, do the hiring, promoting, terminating of any officer. I'm sorry, they have adopted the, um, suits into their rules and regs. Um, just with working with them personally, I, I can attest that, um, have been following all of the rules that we, that we, uh, have been established in rules and regs. Uh, rules and regs that have been adopted and includes a polygraph, um, a psychological exam, you know, and also a police background check. So, um, they actually have a company, currently they have a company going in and, um, looking for any information that they can on, um, either new applicants, if they're an entry level applicant or a lower applicant. So, um, I'm confident that they are doing a thorough job as far as bringing them on. And then, as you're aware, currently we have, um, the officers on probation for, any new officers on probation for a new year, for a year. And then we have just recently established, um, a procedure where, um, if for any reason they don't work out, then we would be able to recoup some of the, um, financial, um, costs that we, that are associated with the hiring, if they leave within that three-year period.
Also, uh, the chief is a member of the South Suburban Police Association. That was one of the other questions. She is an active member, I must say, a very active member.
Yes, ma'am.
Chief of Police, yes, she is.
Okay.
Here's me clerk, clerk Jones.
Yes.
Uh, trustee Franklin has made it to the meeting. He's on the call, but he's on, um, not with a video, but he is on the call.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think that, that, that question that you had had some other parts to it too. Uh, clerk Jones, when you're, won't you finish?
Yeah. Do you have, uh? I think you answered them.
Yeah, I think you did too, chief.
Okay.
Yes. Okay.
Trustee Brooks, are you back in?
Yeah, can, can you hear me? It's, it kicked me out twice. Can you hear me?
So then, so the chief and the manager finished up the questions regarding her status with the South Suburban Police Chiefs Association.
Yes, she answered all of the questions.
Okay, great, great. I just wanted, I just wanted the public to know that, uh, we have a, uh, a good process here at University Park. Uh, I yield my time, Mayor.
All right, well, thank you very much. And if that's it, no one else has any comments or questions, let's start with Mrs. Childress and let's hear your excellent presentation. I'm so looking forward to it.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Um, first of all, I'd like to thank the mayor, board of trustees, uh, Ms. Ernestine, the clerk, treasurer, all the department heads for, uh, participating when my brain goes excited and it, it's fun and loving to be able to give back to the community. Uh, last year, this time, May, uh, 28th, I went to Faith Movers and they gave me a tour. And during the tour, I walked behind the church and they have raised garden beds. So I did ask pastor and Reverend Chambers, how did they get them? They indicated, told me about a group called Share Fest Committee. Group is out of Will County area further in like for New Lennox. So I contacted the gentleman, uh, I invited Ms. Trust, the chair of the, uh, Community Block Club, along with Deborah Strauss, she's the chair of the Senior Citizen Committee, to join me to go to this meeting. During that time, we got a chance to hear other communities and it's in your packet. So you'll see the other communities that were awarded the raised gardens. At that time, the gentleman called me back and he said unfortunately for 2019, they didn't have any money. But he, you know, if there's something comes up, he will give me a call. I received the email on, um, May 20th, asking was we, were we still interested in the raised garden program? And if so, we need to get this done immediately. I went, spoke to my, my, my manager, told her what was going on and what I needed to do immediately. I did a nine facility, um, drive around. I went to Pilgrimage, went to, uh, the Thornwood House, went to, uh, Burnham House, First Baptist, Regal Farm, um, Creedmont Middle School, Palmer Park. Uh, and all of those facilities, I wrote notes down of what would be the best fit. One of the things that, so ironic, I walked outside of 44, we had a spigot. The gentleman said wherever we went, it had to be accessible. It had to have six to eight hours of sunlight and it had to be where you all can manage it within. I went back, I spoke to my manager, we talked about it, we brainstormed. She said, this is gonna be the spot. I got another phone call. He said he wanted to come out. He came out on the 29th. I invited some of the garden volunteers to come out. We did an entire walkthrough of the back of 44 and that's when the ball start rolling. I got another phone call from him saying not, we're not gonna get eight, but we're gonna get nine raised beds. And with this, the nine raised beds will give us the soil, the vegetables, the, um, the, uh, rain barrels, as well as a soaking hole. All we have to do is man it. And then I said, we need wood, because now everybody knows, Mother Nature and all the animals that are around, we needed something to secure so they wouldn't take all the vegetables. So I picked up the phone, I called, and Blue Link is donating the wood. Then I went to our neighbors. Then I went to our neighbors. I spoke to Mr. Keith from American Smiles, and he said he would purchase the chicken wire. Because he, Mayor, and Trustee Brooks, I was asking if they had enough chicken wire, cause I needed four hundred and fifty feet. So, with that being said, everything is getting ready to take place. I highly recommend, I want you all to come out on Friday, June nineteenth, so we can put the beds in, and then the public, which we're doing, I have a flyer, which I'll make sure I send that to you tomorrow. But the residents have an opportunity to come out and join us, and that will be on July first. So, other than that, thank you again, uh, special thanks to Ms. Ernestine, cause I think I run down the hallway screaming when I get excited about the good news that happened in the community. So, so much, any questions?
Yes, ma, I, I, I have a question, Mrs. Childress.
Yes, sir.
So, so my question is, would there be other opportunities to have other community gardens in other places in the community?
Yes, sir. What this one is, is called Phase One.
Okay.
One is giving us an opportunity to see if this fits for us. And once they put all of the plants in and it continues to grow, we're looking at to feed about two hundred residents. And then, then we can go to other parts of the community. On May, Mayor, when I went to visit the farm, Mr. Hill, along with Ms. Morris, from the Chicago Botanical Garden was there. Talking with Ms. Ernestine, why would we go there now when they are looking to do that and they have other resources? So if we can find as many resources as possible, we can spread this whole community with community gardens.
I, I believe that we should have a community full, where there's an opportunity, we could have as many community gardens throughout.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, but this one is definitely the Phase One.
Okay, so this is just the entry level Phase One.
That's it.
Bowden.
Yeah, a question, uh, did you say June nineteenth is when you're gonna do the first phase?
Yes, ma'am, June, June ni, June nineteenth. The day that they're gonna bring the Raised Gardens.
Oh, okay.
The soil will be there next Wednesday, the seventeenth. The gardens and the vegetables will be there on the nineteenth, and the community will be out on July first. Okay?
And, and let me just mention something, Ms. Keely. Um, the chicken wire will be surrounding the perimeters of all the positioned beds. And it's, it's, it's like a little fence, and if you all have any knowledge of any history of farming, the chicken wire will circumvent the squirrels from climbing. They do not climb upon chicken wires, and it's tall enough to allow and circumvent the deer. I took pictures the other day, deers are all the way around. So we need something to secure those, uh, animals that you see on a constant basis, and that's the squirrels and the deer. And it's gonna be cosmetically pleasing, so it's a great opportunity for everybody to volunteer.
Trustee Brooks?
Mayor, may I be recognized? Oh, I, I don't know if I, may I be recognized?
Yes, sir. Go ahead, trustee.
I'm frozen again, Jesus.
No, we can, we can.
We can hear you though, trustee.
We can hear you still. We can still, we can still hear you. Brooks?
Uh, clerk Jones?
Yes.
Uh, Trustee Millen is on the call.
Good, good.
Welcome to the team.
I can only do it via the phone.
That's okay, that's okay. Thank you for your participation. Brooks? Trustee Brooks?
Okay, I'm back, yes. Mayor, may I be recognized, uh? Okay, uh, Ms. Keely, um, I, I don't, I'm, I'm, I'm all for a community garden. I just have one question, uh, Regal Farm, I know that, that is, uh, um, one place that everyone seems to be a focal point of trying to bring back to life. Has that been considered a place of where it can, as a second location, I mean, as a, as an option?
Well, trustee, let me just go back, cause I don't know if you heard me or not, uh, the day, May twenty second, the gentleman from Chicago Botanical Garden was there. He was doing the actual tour of the facility to do a community garden.
Okay.
During the May, I'm sorry, during the March tenth meeting, when, you remember when they came out and did the presentation?
Oh, these are those people?
Yes. No, this is a group is totally different from that.
Y'all frozen, Jesus. Okay, okay.
Sam Hill.
Okay.
Back trustee, so trustee, on March, on March tenth, had the meeting. Mr. Hill is from the basketball, and he brought a gentleman with him from the Chicago Botanical Garden. Then.
Right.
Visit the farm on May twenty second.
Okay.
I got there to do my tour, to do my, my list of things that, what, with pros and cons. These two gentlemen mentioned and told me that they were looking.
Frozen.
So, with this being the Phase One, we're gonna work through the Phase One, and then, of course, I'm gonna write as many as possible, cause what the, the Share Fest wants to do is flood University Park with community raised. People standing there when the gentleman told us, and Ohio County Green was there, that's what they're gonna do. But this one is our first Phase One.
Okay, um, uh, one question, did, uh, you know I'm gonna ask this because, did anyone talk to Ms. Millie Morgan?
Did. Ms. Morris doesn't do vegetables, she only does gra, I mean, uh, flowers.
Okay.
I spoke to her.
What's, what's her, what's her opinion about the location?
She didn't say anything about the location, the only thing she said is what she could do far as participating. She says she.
Okay.
Did vegetables, but she's definitely interested in learning. So again, when the information goes, uh, the flyer is definitely out for the July first. I'm gonna encourage her, as well as other residents, cause you got, so I want you to come out there. Anybody that has the green thumb of gardening far as vegetables, encourage them to participate.
Okay, um, um, and now, this won't, in, the only thing, the reason why I just asked the location is that I know that we're gonna have a lot of activity with, uh, one hundred town center with the, um, uh, removing of the mold and asbestos and so forth, and I, you know, the residents at that location, I'm just, that's the only reason why I was just a little concerned about that and what their opinion would be about it, that's all.
No, sir, where, the location where we're at, again, like I said, I went to a variety of places, and I did a whole list of pros and cons, I took a lot of pictures, and I could show those pictures with you, but one of the things that I can say, and I had Ms. Ernestine come out, and me and her stood there, and we talked for a while standing outside about.
Okay.
This is the location that we started Phase One with, because it's not even by the building. You're looking at where we park our cars at.
Right.
They're out, so when you come out, again, you'll see it on the January nineteenth, cause I definitely want you to come out now.
Right, all right, all right, well, let me ask this, is it gonna be further, uh, east, more towards where the PD, that's a good, is that?
No, sir, it's directly behind the office.
Directly behind the office.
That is east, that's east, that's the easternmost part of the parking lot, it's northeast of the building.
Okay.
It's right, you know, when you're driving north on Town Center Drive, as far as you can go. And you make a sharp left into the parking lot, but that is the area. The distribution of the trucks that are coming in for one town center are coming in on the west side of the parking lot. They don't even encroach at all on the east side, all their traffic is on the west side. And that's the way we've diverted it, and we told them they cannot come over east, so they don't even come over east at all.
Okay, well, let me ask, uh, Madam Village Manager, did we get a chance, I know, uh, I got a call at about six thirty that, uh, Trustee Jenkins-Bell was at the hospital, did we, uh, did you ever have a discussion with her, so we can make sure that, uh, and I'm just only asking, cause, uh, I'm just foreseeing, it's almost like you know the conversation is gonna come up, did you talk to her about why there and not at Regal Farm, because?
I had a, I had, I did more of the listening versus talking, because, um, she did most of the talking, but I did listen to her, and of course, she did want Regal Farm. But I talked about some other structural issues and, and, um, I predominantly listened.
Okay, I, I, I just, I, I'm gonna yield my time, Mayor, I think, uh, and I think, Mayor, I, I'm probably on the page that, uh, you on, we probably on, uh, I can see that in something like this, we always wanna find a, a common ground, especially when a trustee is passionate, uh, and they wanna see something, and then, of course, Ms. Keely, you worked at, you know, you were at Regal Farm, so you know.
That's what I was getting ready to say, my first, everybody on this phone knows, my first love is Regal Farm.
Right, right.
Half your children, the half the community came through that facility.
Yeah.
Right, right.
In two thousand fifteen, when they shut it down, and when I went back over there in two thousand eighteen, it was a disaster. And again, no disrespect to nobody that has that passion, but we want not lose an opportunity right now. Right now, when these, when this man picked, picked up the phone and email and said, look, eight thousand dollars, get ready, come your way, and we get ready, bring it, we can't lose that. I mean, we were looking at, we looking at, uh, uh, again, I just got the phone call weeks ago, literally. And soon as I got it.
Right.
Ernestine gave me the go, and everybody on the phone, no, when you give me that go, I'm gonna run with it. And I did just that. I have pictures, and I'm gonna send it. Cause I did, I did a lot of pictures of all of these facilities.
Okay.
The farm wasn't ready to even take him over there to present and say, we ready to put this over there.
Right, right.
Real with each other, and I feel with that, I love the farm.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, yeah, and.
It's my day camp kids.
Yeah.
Right, right, I just wanted to make sure that we covered ground with a trustee that she's not here, and, and I know that.
I really hate she's not on here, you know, because I want her to know, our intentions were so real with making sure that we found the best place for this immediately. And vegetables coming up in August.
And like you said, there's other places that we're going to do it as well.
Yeah, this is just the Phase One, it's a Phase One, that's all, Phase One.
But I want definitely to ride over to the, uh, new village hall, and again, I can.
Okay.
To you guys.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, uh, yeah, and, and, and this, and again, I just wanna make sure that, uh, the residents will also feel that, you know, I know forty-four is, when we say community, you know, I, 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 I want them to feel more as if they are more involved and not, it's just something circling around village hall or outside of the center point of Regal Farm, that's all. Mayor, I yield my time.
Then also, trustee, we also have to encourage the residents that, with it being a Phase One, once we.
Okay.
When, we can go to all of these different phases, because again, we're gonna stay committed with the Share Fest. If you look at all those other communities that I sent you, they've been on with this for years, for years. You know, mom, look at mommy, and they have vegetables, the church, didn't nobody even know, it was like a secret back then.
Yeah.
But the church provides vegetables for the food giveaway.
Right.
We have to look at it in a whole different light.
Mi, Ms. Ms. Keely, have we ever entertained, uh, I, I've, I think I talked to the mayor at one point, uh, is the memorial center up there, I know that the first part of that, we have wires running underground. Have we ever thought about possibly starting a garden there, um, you know, uh, as, as residents ride by, you know, raised garden beds, you know, Madam Village Manager, you can answer this as well. Uh, have we thought about that spot when we did this? And, and only reason why I said is that I, I, I mentioned to the mayor that, uh, it was, it would be beautiful for those moments where a resident would like to come, once we get that parking lot paved, um, that we can live, yeah, that, that they can actually come up there and take a walk, uh, when they up at the wall, that they actually can walk and observe the garden. Um, has that, was that spot ever considered? That was, uh, one vision that I know that.
Well, we have to remember about the accessibility and about the security of gardens.
Yeah.
The things I can say, again, trustee, being at the barn for twenty-one years, we had a lot of residents that would come over to the farm when we leave and steal the vegetables. And not.
Okay.
Kill them, but damage them tremendously. And I'm not.
Okay.
Couple of things that they did do that was not pleasing to people that had to eat that food. So again, to be very, very careful these times, where we're gonna put those, those raised beds, that we know it'll be in a secure location.
Okay, okay, and, and, and we do, and patrol knows to get back there, we have a camera back there, right, or?
I, I didn't wanna say that, but it's several back there.
Okay, okay.
Sorry, Ms. E. Uh, trustee, when you come over to see me, I'm gonna say, do a tour with you.
Okay, Ma, Mayor, I yield my time.
Does anybody else have any?
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Mrs. Childress, congratulations. And, uh, we all know that our goal is to make sure that when we go to Regal Farm, that it is the best that it's ever been before, and I would like to see community gardens through all and out of the community. So with that enough said, thank you so much, Mrs. Childress, let's move on to our next agenda. It is Mrs., let me see, is it Sonia Coffey?
Coffey.
Coffey, okay, well, Mrs. Coffey, it's on you guys.
I'm muted. You're muted, Ms. Coffey, muted, Ms. Coffey.
Okay. Can everyone hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Good evening, um, again, I'm Sonia Coffey, President of CHW Management Group. I would like to first thank Mayor Rudes and, um, the Board of Trustees for the opportunity for me to present to you, um, this evening, as well as the entire administrative, um, staff who assisted, um, helping. Um, uh, I would first like to ask that each of you join me in this taking a moment of silence, um, as more in the, of, uh, George Floyd, if we could just take a moment to mourn. Thank you. It is the hope, uh, that our nation will someday, um, address the root, uh, causes that led to the unfortunate death of. I hope that you have had the opportunity to read about me. Otherwise, I'm happy to answer any questions at the end of the presentation. Please allow me to introduce my team, my leadership team, which is, uh, would be myself, founder and president, uh, Jerry Hammond, he's the CEO and PGA Pro. Uh, and then we have Deborah Roberts, who is under, she's our COO, she's under the weather right now, and she would, um, going to try to join us, um, if she can. And then we have Steve Rennecker, he's our Senior Vice, uh, President of the Development, I'm so sorry, uh, Strategic, uh, Initiatives. Then we have Marcia Lee, um, who is our VP Facilities Management, Management. And we have Jerry Thomas, who is also, um, on, on the call, uh, our Public Relations Director. And we have, um, Rob Linden, who is our consultant, for the Chief Consultant of, um, Hospitality Management Food and Beverages. So, at, at this time, I would like to, uh, enter, in, introduce to you my CEO, Jerry Hammond. So at, at this time, I would like to, uh, enter, in, introduce to you my CEO, Jerry Hammond.
Good evening, everyone, how are you today?
Great.
Good.
Evening.
For this opportunity to, um, be able to present to you, uh, Mayor Rudas, Board of Trustees. I am, I commend each of you for your, your, your commitment to service for University Park. I'm very well of the, the work that comes with it, the dedication, um, as. My father was, uh, first black president of the city council. So I got a lot of that growing up, so I'm very, very.
Do you all hear that?
Got a lot of feedback.
We got, we got muffled for a minute.
Got a lot of feedback. Mr. Hammond.
Check the microphone, tell him check the microphone.
Something, something's the matter with your microphone. Could you check it to see it? You're going in it out and it's really fuzzy and overwhelming with sound.
It might be my voice, I'm not sure.
Now, now you're fine.
You're good, I think you're too far away, stay where you are.
Okay, all right. All right, well, as I was saying, um, you know, I was born and raised under, uh, under, uh, a political family, so I'm very familiar with your service and what you all do, so I commend each of you. Um, my mother also was a school teacher, so my, my nature and my DNA is, is all about service. And, you know, I was very fortunate at a young age to the game of golf. And I've, I've been ble- very blessed to take it a, a long way. I'm a college, um, collegiate basketball player, NCAA player, for high university, where I transferred, uh, to take my, um, you know, my leap of faith into golf, and it's been, it's been very good. So, uh, with that being said, you know, I'm very excited to, uh, understand what you have there at University Park. And, uh, my goal would be to come in and provide you some of the things that I've already done. Um, I think that the, the, the whole school system, uh, University Park is, is, uh, hotbed, it's very fruitful. A young, a lot of young, vibrant families there, um, that I think golf opportunity to, to learn and grow with the game will be very, uh, fulfilling. Obviously, as you all know, golf is a power play, it's a power game. It provides, um, the opportunity for all to have recreation, to learn, to grow. Um, there's so much social capital in the game, and I've been fortunate over the years to get a lot of headway within the PGA. Um, just recently, they selected me as a Teacher of the Year. Um, I've, I've had, I was the only, I, I was fortunate to have, we were the first black duo fan, uh, player coach. There's never been that type of duo inside the ropes at a PGA event, let alone PGA Championship. So, uh, and behind me, you can see a wall, and these are all the kids that I've been able to coach over the years, and all of them have gone on to school on scholarships. So I've been able to raise over a million dollars worth of scholarships, uh, along with sponsorship monies. I ran it first tee for 10 years, um, where I brought in Tiger Woods in 2001, former clinic, and he left behind a quarter of a million dollars for our program. On then, he actually chose two, uh, yeah, two of my kids to represent his junior national team for several years. So I was really close and, and, and formed a relationship with Tiger and his family and Cheyenne. So, uh, as this year, hadn't COVID hit, we were planning on having Cheyenne Woods, Tiger's niece, who was an LPJ, African-American female, who, uh, here and do a clinic for us, along with Harold Varner, who is another black PGA, uh, one professional. So we were going to have them both come here had COVID not hit. So, but here nor there, that was another, um, event that we were going to do that raised money and capital for the program, for the kids. Uh, we also, um, I used to run a celebrity event where I used to bring in a lot of the NFL and NBA guys. So these are some of the things that I'd really love to, to bring to Chicago and University Park. Um, I think that's, um, it's very doable. So I, with that being said, um, I'm going to get off the teaching. I don't want to go, I can, I can go long winded and I can, I can talk about all the accomplishments that I have that I'd like to bring to you. But, uh, with that being said, I, I want to kind of move into bringing, um, our Senior VP of Development uh, to the table to talk to you a little bit more about UP and the growth and the opportunities that we have there. And, um, this, this guy, he is, um, he's my, he's my brother from another mother. And he's been doing a lot of good things along the way. So with that being said, I'd like to introduce Steve Rennecker.
Jerry had his, uh, voice in the right position. If I get out of position, please let me know. Um, I wanted to first say hi to Mayor Rudas and, uh, City Manager Ernestine and the rest of the trustees. It's a real honor to be able to speak to you tonight, uh, for this opportunity at University Park. My background, I'm from a small town in Indiana. I grew up on a farm. It was pretty much farming and basketball, and, uh, I went on to Taylor University, a small school in Indiana. And, uh, it was after that that I had my first association with Chicago. I, uh, was invited to a five-day tryout with the Chicago Bulls, but unfortunately, it only lasted three days. And, uh, at the end of three days, they said, thanks for coming, and here's your $60 meal money for three days. And a buck. So that was my first experience with Chicago. I, I really got into the golf business at that point, started off, uh, mowing grass and raking bunkers and, you know, I'd even, uh, fix some food at nighttime, but really learned the golf business from the grassroots. Uh, at age 24, I was a general manager of a private club in Indiana. Uh, really didn't know, uh, a whole lot, but was, was kind of thrust in that position. But, you know, golf's been great, I've been in it 30 years. Uh, probably the highlights were the first upscale public golf course, uh, in the Midwest, was in Columbus, Ohio, and I was the general manager. It was called Bent Tree Golf Club, and we were, we were nominated to top public golf course in the United States. The first time I saw University Park, it reminded me so much of Bent Tree. So, you know, that was probably my first experience. Uh, second was with Shaker Run Golf Course in Ohio. It was, uh, ranked third in the United States on upscale public golf courses. So I've really had a, uh, wonderful opportunities in the game of golf. It's, it's, it's really a way to bring people together, and that's what I love so much about it. Uh, because nobody masters the game. So if you move to the next slide, uh, or to the bullet points, it says University Park Golf Club at the top, the project outline. Could everybody find that? It popped.
Yes, I've got it.
Okay. Basically, our experience covers each area of this outline. And I wanted to ask if you could hold the reflections till the end of the presentation, that would be great. The goal here obviously is to make University Park successful. And, and I have to tell you that, uh, it's, you know, the team that's been put together. We have Marcia Lee that's handling, and you'll see her name in the bullet point. Handling facility maintenance, management. She has such a great eye to what a golf course should look like and how the experience should be. Uh, and I tell you that because I want you to understand what our team is all about. We have a great team. Jerry Thomas, our Public Relations Director, I mean, how fortunate for us to have a gentleman with that kind of experience in the area, those kind of relationships, and the ability to put together a plan that will help us succeed and get the word out on what we're doing. The third person I want to mention, and, and he is my brother, Jerry Hammond. Uh, I always get a little emotional when I talk about Jerry. We've been friends for 25 years, and my career has been 30 years. And I will tell you this, that in my career, I've never seen anybody that make an impact on the golf in the industry like Jerry Hammond. Very kids and adults, the game of golf. And you'll see this within the University Park community, how he will make a difference. It's not just learning how to play golf, he's going to teach them life skills, he's going to, he's going to give them a path. And behind me, and I'm sure maybe you can't see it, but there's 100 pictures of students on the wall. And they're all kids that have come to Jerry, and they've gone on to play college golf. And how exciting that is. And, and, you know, that's part of the excitement of being involved with University Park because, you know, he'll make a difference like that for your community. The project outline that we have, um, oh, and I forgot to mention Sonia now. Sonia, our president, she was on here first. You got to understand something about her, she's very detailed, she's very organized, and she keeps the craziness kind of controlled. So we got a great president of our company, so it's really a good group of people. Um, the outline, when it comes to running the, the, uh, facility, it really boils down to five things, everybody. You know, I mean, I don't want to sound cliche, but you have to have a quality facility, and you did your part. It's a beautiful building, it's a really wonderful golf course. The second thing you need is, is customer service. You know, everybody talks about it, but what we're going to give you on customer service is hopefully something you haven't seen before. The third thing is sales, and, and we all know this, we need to grow sales. It's where Jerry Thomas is going to come in, uh, and help so much, but we need to raise the bar on that. Fourth thing is, we have to efficiently utilize expenses. We can't just spend it because it's in the budget. The budget's only good if the revenue comes in, so that's the fourth thing. And then the fifth thing is, we need to make this facility a place that's fun and enjoyable for all of you and for the community in the area. If we do that, you know, then, then we can build that trust back, and we could really have something special. So that's kind of an overview. The outline talks about sales and marketing, merchandise, and in a lot of other things. But at this, you know, and again, if you could hold your questions to the end, that would be great. But at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Jerry Thomas, uh, who heads up our media relations.
Jerry, are you there?
Mr. Thomas is muted, this is Joe Miller. It sounds, it looks like he's muted on the participant list, so he needs to unmute.
Jerry?
Yeah, he should go here.
Yeah, can you hear us, Jerry? You're on mute. You have to unmute your call.
I asked him to unmute. I don't know, it, I see the picture there, but he's not responding.
Okay, well, what, what we'll do is talk a little bit about hospitality management, uh, which is the next slide after the bullet points. It's slide number 10. And we know that you have a relationship with a group that's, uh, operating hospitality, food and beverage. But, you know, we do want to say we are equipped and ready to handle that. When you run a facility, it's very important that, that the food and beverage and the golf works in concert. Uh, there's so many things that, that really go into this, and when you have events, functions, not just to mention that, but, you know, your staff, how they treat people and how they understand the goals. And we will be happy, uh, if it's the city's decision to work with the group that's there and, and make it a great facility. But, uh, we do want you to know that we can, uh, operate the, the food and beverage in the hospitality department. If you go to the next slide, um.
You have not entered any numbers. Please enter the meeting password, followed by pound.
Hey, Jerry, you're, can you hear us?
You have not entered any numbers. Goodbye.
Okay. So as far as our hospitality management goes, um.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Jerry, can you hear us?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes, and.
Okay, great, okay, thank you. I don't know what happened there. Okay, I'm talking, okay.
You'll be up in just a sec.
Thank you so much, okay.
Okay, so we, we can handle the hospitality management, the training of the staff, the relationships with the vendors. It's really a great opportunity because the cost to play golf over the last 30 years is pretty much the same. People that were paying $25 in 1995 and the same amount for green fees now. And where golf courses have really changed is they've put a lot more emphasis on the food and beverage. So it's really became, become a big part of it. So as far as the hospitality management, if you can go to the next slide. We know how important it is to have weddings, graduation parties, baby showers, birthday parties. It's really engaging with the community and, and, and really being a center of the events that take place at University Park in the area, where they can count on our facility to handle events. And it's really going to be part, as we grow this thing, it's really going to be part of the change in the culture that's created. So, um, you can see, we really can take it from A to Z. Uh, we can do the simple things such as a hamburger and french fries, uh, all the way up to, uh, larger events, and, and, and a larger menu. When we get into the real big events, another thing that I want to point out as far as hospitality management goes is, is that we will utilize local caterers. You know, if we can provide the venue for these caterers, they can bring functions in. All it's going to do is help the revenue for the, for the club. And the more, uh, caterers that we get in, and we, uh, create this culture, the better. And we'll get more people coming. So that's kind of an overview of hospitality management. And I'd like to turn it over now, Jerry, to you for engagement and sponsorships.
He has a request to unmute.
I think we may be having connection issues on the phone.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Thank you, I don't know what's going on here. Okay, thank you, Steve, thank you so much, thank you so much. We apologize for that technical problem there, and this new technology, this new normal, we've got to all get used to it. But first of all, I just want to thank everyone for having the opportunity to share a little information about the community engagement in India. You've heard the team talk about the team that's been assembled and the great facility we have, but part of my job is to make sure that's not a, a, a kept secret within the community of University Park. My job is to get this message out that we've assembled such a great team and we have such a great facility. One thing that I found very fascinating is, as soon as I was invited to become a member of this team, was the. was the great history of University Park. And come to find out that it was established by two gentlemen, a father and a son, both Lewis and Steve Manilow. And these gentlemen were very established in the art community of Chicago. Their name is now with the Museum of Contemporary Art, the Art Museum, and almost every major museum in Chicago they were connected to. But when these gentlemen established the land in University Park in 1967, which probably most of you know, their idea for this area was for it to be a utopia of integration. And we know that when it comes to golf courses, it's almost been the opposite of that. You know, golf courses have been places that for decades have discriminated against people of color. Even someone as powerful as Michael Jordan had a hard time even becoming a member of a golf club up in Highland Park where he lived at the peak of his career. And we've seen that even with Tiger Woods, it's still very hard for African Americans to ascend in the sport. But we have a golden opportunity right here in University Park to become a model, to become an example of what it is to open the doors of golfing to people of color, especially African Americans. So my job is to do all I can to help with those connectors. We know in recent weeks that we had some, we had Kerry from the Golden State Warriors who's donated millions of dollars to help establish a golfing program at Howard University. And that's to expose this game to people of color. We want to do all we can to use our network to invite celebrities and to to get to the table of corporate executives and to get them to see this this golf range as a place where they can play top golf, but also as an opportunity to expose this to young people, to to open the doors to to more executives who want to play on the range. That's what our job is to do with media and community engagement. This team you'll probably see from a list of some of the involvement, community involvement over the years. I would not go by item by item, but we give you a list of where they've been connected. Well, from the grassroots all the way up to the corporate elite, they're involved in exposing this game to people throughout the community, especially people of color from the from Ebony Ladies Beginning Golfers to the First Tee of Columbus to torch for Tots events for nonprofits that want to raise funds for their organizations. There's a history of being very involved there. Our job is to continue that legacy in our local area, in our region, and even connect it at the national level. Locally, we have some great things that are happening in University Park with Amazon coming in. And we have Aqua Illinois. We have different companies that are close in proximity to to University Park. Our job is to engage them, to do events and to be engaged in the golf course there in University Park. We also reach to some of those corporations that have a good history of working with people of color, like Allstate and Capital One, connecting with companies that do business with African Americans and African Americans who are spending their dollars to engage corporations, whether it's McDonald's, whether it's TransUnion, whether it's Uber. Our job is to connect those dots, and that's what we will be doing there. Moving on, our job again is to make sure that we're engaging you with the media, with with sports publications, with business publications as we have events there, whether it's the mayor engagement event there or withdrawing dignitaries, whether it's the congresswoman, the congressmen, or the senators. Whatever we do on that range, our job is to get that word out to the media. And we will be very aggressive in that endeavor. Other than that, this is a matter again of just telling our story, telling the story of University Park, making sure that we create all this strategy to help this range become that template, a model of what a diverse environment can be for those who are interested in the sport of golf. Steve, I want to turn this back over to you. If there are any more questions from the trustees, the mayor, at the end of the presentation, I'd be more than happy to give some more details of what we presented.
Thanks, Jerry. If you move to the next slide, it's reality and facts. Have that up. It starts out at the top with business challenges. You know, obviously, operating a facility, you need to know what the challenges are. It's not just Chicago, but it's really all across the country. Fattured with golf courses, there's a lot of golf courses. There were so many that were built, you know, from 1990 on. And unfortunately, the golfers didn't grow in coordination with all the courses. So that's one. Public perceptions that they have of the facility. You know, the third thing is, you know, we want to do things to change and improve the property, you know, subtly, not not so much dramatically, but when they come out to play that they'll see a difference. Another challenge is event sales in the short term. Not sure what the current operator has booked for this year. I mentioned earlier pricing for golf. You know, essentially, golf courses are charging the same thing as 25 years ago. So we need to look for additional revenue sources. Facility doesn't have a driving range. And it's really a way to develop players. So we want to look and explore all the possible avenues on that. So those are really some of the business challenges. And obviously, we want to of the quality and the sales and the service. A couple specifics to operations that 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 we do, it's a little different. We identify what are the top five objectives. And I kind of went through those earlier. And then each department within the facility has their own goals. So if you happen to be working in hospitality, the hospitality department will have its own goals to fit in unison with the facility. Going down the list, we do training on all our staff. We just try not to just throw them into the fire. We make sure they're trained well, they're hired well. Each staff member will have incentives. And I want you to really take note of that. I can't tell you how important is our team that we have at University Park's going to. That's what's going to make it for the facility. And you know this. We have to take time and hire the right people. We have to, they have to be compensated well. And I'll tell you a little bit about that in a minute. But the staff is real key. Obviously, we need our financial statements, inventory controls, a good marketing plan, which we'll have with with Jerry, and and really developing public and private partnerships. You know, I can't stress that enough, too. Developing the relationship with the local businesses where it's not just a one-time thing, that they they plan their year to come out and utilize the facility, whether it's for a golf outing, a meeting, having a Christmas party there, having a fundraiser there, being involved in Martin Luther King Day and having a great event for that. You know, we want to have these partnerships. And then it kind of goes down and and talks a little bit project strategies that we'll be using. And we're going to, we're going to show you some new things. We're going to have all-in-one contests that I don't think you've ever seen before. And you may drive in someday and we have a basketball goal in the parking lot. And somebody there and, you know, if you shoot three free throws and you make them all, you you win something. You know, we want to keep people on the edge of their seat wondering what they're going to experience each time they come out to the property. And you know what? That's going to make a difference. And we want, and we know how important it is that this facility supports the economy, generating a revenue stream that will relieve the taxpayers of the financial burdens over time. We know it's not going to happen overnight. But I'm going to tell you something, we're going to be dedicated to this task. If we could move to the next slide. It's talking about key approaches. And I don't want to be repetitive, but we got to keep our customers You need to make it a better experience. We all know this. Where you go to a place, you want to feel comfortable, you want to, you want it to be quality, you want to have fun. We want to do that. The third thing is, and I tried to make a science of this one time. If you think about it, if you go out to play golf, how many times does University Park touch the customer? So I'm going to go through these real quick, but I want you to think about this. If you're wanting to play golf, what you do nowadays, we get online sometimes and make a tee time. But but a lot of times we call the facility. So that's the first impression that we make is the phone call. The second impression is when you drive into the parking lot, the way the parking lot looks. Are you greeted by somebody from the cart staff that helps you with your bag? That's the second impression. The third impression is when you walk into the pro shop. Are you greeted? Do you feel welcome? It's so important. The fourth impression is generally when you go to a golf course, you may slide over to the restaurant snack bar and and purchase something. So that's the fourth impression. The fifth impression is you go to the first tee and there's a starter there. And they're they're calling you respectfully by your name that it's your tee time. That's the fifth impression. The sixth impression is the ranger, you know, telling you maybe to, you need to speed up a little bit or but you know, our rangers, we want them to be more than policemen. We want them to be people that help. We want them to offer suggestions on how to play the golf course better. That's the sixth. The seventh impression is a beverage cart. You know, when you play golf, you usually see a beverage cart. Do you see them like you should? Are they friendly? Are they sincere? You know, then you have, you know, sometimes you run into the maintenance staff. And and I've heard this too many times. I was over a five-foot putt and somebody came by and was mowing and I lost my concentration and missed the putt. So, you know, and then finally, you go back into the clubhouse and you leave. And and are you said, thank you. We look for staff, folks. This is a science. It's not just a task. It's a science. We have to find people that fit criteria to pull off this service, these nine touches. They have to be friendly. They have to be knowledgeable. They have to be respectful. And they need to be thankful. And you know, this is where the power comes in, and it really does. You have a staff person. And you equip them with the prices for University Park, how much it costs to play golf. And if we have a special going for if you buy 10 rounds and what our membership prices are. And what happens if you want to book an event, a golf outing, or you want to have a wedding? Who do I talk to? So each one of our staff members needs to be aware of what's going on at the property. And that's what we do with the training aspect. Now, think about it. You may have 20 employees at the at the University Park Golf Club. That's our team. And listen, it doesn't just fall on one person or two to make sales. It's the whole team. You know, nothing made me happier is when a maintenance staff member would come in and say, I've got a golf outing book for you. So one last point on staff, and I spent a little more time on it than necessary, but I want you to understand how important it is. Our staff can't just make an hourly wage. Our staff is going to have five different ways that they can make money. And I want to stress that because when they come to work, I don't want them just thinking, okay, 40 hours at $12 an hour. I want them hungry to sell an event to to when they're out in the public, to talk about the facility, to to if they have relatives or friends that are going to have a party, a wedding reception or anything, that they refer it to the club, that they can answer the questions. And you know what? At the end of the month, we get a gratuity for that event. And they get their paycheck. They're going to see the hours they worked. They're going to see a commission on the sale and they're going to see a gratuity because they worked the event. And when we pay gratuities, we don't just do it for the food people. Everybody at our property gets a piece of it. So if if we have 10 people working that day and we get a $200 gratuity, everybody gets $20. And you know, I've found, and we've found as a group, that that really keeps your staff engaged. So I'm sorry I spent a little bit more time on that. But 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 the reality of this thing is, it's it's, you know, you can build a nice golf course and you can have a nice clubhouse, but really boils down to the people. And you know what? If our staff treats the customers great, then the customers are going to go out and tell everybody about it. They got to be at University Park. You know, and and that's what's going to be powerful because it's going to grow the thing. The next slide is the budget. We put together the budget without food and beverage. We put it together essentially with just the golf side. So the numbers don't look real strong, as you know. We also put together a six-year pro forma that shows how the it's it's five, but it includes this year. And it it will show you the growth that's that's happening. One thing that you'll notice, it's probably different than the financial numbers that you've seen in the past, is the top line. And that's where Jerry Hammond, Jerry Thomas, our relationships. You know, I spoke with the mayor last week, the passion in his voice for the community and getting out and building some partnerships and relationships with the community and get them involved, get their employees involved. So that's a big number. But we feel confident we can do that. Rest of it's green fee cart fees. We have a person obviously dedicated to the marketing and public relations in Jerry Thomas. And then we have the rest of the categories. So the next slide will will show you the, again, it's a five-year pro forma, but it also includes this year, which is 2020. I'm sure you see this and you you wonder how are these all going to be put together, but it'll happen. And and at this point, I'd like to turn it back over to Sonia. And she's going to go over the COVID-19 guidelines.
Yes. As part of the CH Management Group LSC commitment to preventing the spread of the coronavirus, we're prepared to provide free PPE equipment in the form of masks and hand sanitizers for any of the guests that will be attending the University Park Golf Club on day one, if awarded this opportunity to partner with you all. And on behalf of my whole leadership team, I would like to thank Mayor Rudes, the village trustees, everyone who has assisted in making this possible. We thank you very much for giving us this opportunity. And we really take pleasure in partnering with you all for this opportunity to make University Park Golf Club a facility where everybody wants to come play golf, have a great time in in their day on a great note at the golf course. And so with that being said, if we could play the video and then we can open the floor up for questions. Coming right up. One second, please. Thank you. We can't hear it. Can you all hear the video?
No.
No.
Yeah, we probably would have to hear the video. I think it's, it was, get ready to start playing. Hear it a little bit.
The video played, we just can't hear it.
Yeah, you can't hear it though.
Come on, take your time. It's good work, girlie.
It's so gratifying. I mean, I love the game.
Man, look at that stance, baby.
And not be able to play, but to see someone else play and help that is even more gratifying.
Not bad, man.
I talk to him all the time. If I need to make a big decision about something or just run stuff by him, he's just an awesome, awesome person.
I honestly could not imagine my life whatsoever without Jerry in it.
Where would I be without Jerry Hammond? I wouldn't be where I'm at today. I don't think I'd be a nationwide. I don't think I would be the person I am. I can say I'm a much better person and my life's so much better off for having Jerry in my life.
It's good work.
He gives so much and he wants nothing in return. He's so humble. He's, um, he's focused on, it's not about him, it's about those kids.
Try to finish not so much flippy. All right, try to finish more round.
It's been life-changing for me, believe it or not. You know, people say I've changed these kids' lives, but they've changed my life.
Better. I don't care. That's fine. I mean, we're getting it. It's holding its line.
I'd like to thank my PGA pro Jerry Hammond for being an amazing mentor and introduced me to the world of golf and this amazing life.
For everything that he's done for me with golf and everything else.
For always being here for me in every area and aspect of my life. I love you very much and I'm very blessed to have you in my life.
I see you getting red though.
Nah, the shirts are small.
Is that what that means?
Yeah, I think shirts get small when you get big. Is that how it works? What size is that shirt?
I remember Wyatt from the first day at the, it was the golf dome on Broad Street and his father brought him over.
I heard so many good things about Jerry that I went to impress him. And the first, no more than five minutes, Jerry gave me a couple drills that I still use to this day. And I got it up in the air on a consistent basis. I was like, that's the guy. That's the guy.
Where you want me to go?
Uh, what club is that?
I got it eight.
Take it at that green hole out there. But as a kid, he showed resilience. He showed tenacity.
I like that though.
When I think of Wyatt, I think of tenacity. You know, that's, the kid's tough.
Pumped as nails.
Wyatt followed his mentor by becoming a PGA member.
Two, three.
They work side by side at the Hammond Golf Academy while Wyatt continues to chase his dream of playing professionally. In 2015, Wyatt tied for 20th at the PGA Professional Championship and narrowly missed earning a berth to compete in the 97th PGA Championship.
That left arm was a little closer. To see Wyatt really do what he's done with his life and his game, you know, it's special. Sort of now, 15 years later, and this kid's embarking on reaching his dream, it's worth it. Every, every, every minute.
He's, you know, my mentor, life coach, philosopher, you know, the list goes on and on. Those connections and bonds don't happen every day.
The PGA is big for me. I mean, it's been life-changing for me. I'm proud to be PGA pro. I, I hold that pretty high. I'm first to say, you know, I'm a child of God. I'm a father, I'm a husband and I'm a PGA pro.
All the pictures on the walls and, and the, you know, kids that he's had. If I can get like 20% of what he's accomplished in life, I think I'll be doing okay. I want to thank my PGA pro Jerry Hammond for changing my life.
Great. Thank you. We'll open up a question.
Board of trustees?
May I be recognized? Mayor, may I be recognized?
Trustee McMartin, there you go. I just don't see your face.
Where is he?
Well, listen, with this new technology, we're just trying to work it out, but my phone wouldn't work. So I, I want to be the first one because I can only be heard. I don't know who it was, but I know that a gentleman spoke of the different celebrity golfers that, that he's come in contact with since he's been in the business. And I had a grand fortunate opportunity to meet Cheyenne Woods. She looks just like her uncle. But anyway, will we get a chance to meet her? Or is that something that has passed or is it something that is, uh, ongoing right now? Can we do it?
I would say, yes, we can do it. It's just that when COVID hit, it disrupted some things. But I have, I do have relationships with Cheyenne, with Harold. So, you know, they're, they understand the, the need and the want of our community and our kids. So they, and we just built a relationship. So yes, it's to bring them to University Park.
Yeah, I think it would be a great thing because I had an opportunity to meet her and she's a wonderful person. And I think it'd be a bright side for us at University Park, a bright light for University Park to bring Cheyenne and whoever else to the golf course to meet some of the young people in the facility.
Correct.
Okay, Mayor, I yield my time.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah. Shirley, you want to go first? By saying that you had unmuted. Okay. May I be recognized?
Go ahead, trustee.
Okay, uh, let me start. Who introduced you all to University Park? Who did this?
I, um, I was attending a convention last year, the National League of Cities. And at being there, I had the opportunity to network with the mayor and a couple other of the team that was there. And it, since I have a passion for golf also, it was just presented that, you know, this situation was going on and everything. And I just was very interested in it. And so
What situation?
That the golf course may be coming up, that you might need an operator or such. So I just did some research, looked up, you know, University Parks Golf Club and found it to be a wonderful, you know, facility because I like golf. My mom plays golf. As you know, I know Jerry, everybody that surrounds me plays golf and everything. So it was,
Presented to you. Okay. What other golf courts you, you all run?
The Golf Depot. The Golf Depot.
So the total of how many golf clubs, courses? One, I, I, you said one. Is it more than one? There's one at the moment, but we've got, we've had the history of, we, we, we've done, now that we've collaborated, we have one under our belt. But prior to us collaborating, we've had years of history in several golf courses, many golf courses apart and not just locally. As you heard Steve talk about it, Steve and I have partnered a long time ago and we obviously partnered together with Sonia. But over the years, we've been in the management business and Steve can speak to this for over 27 years. But as a company, you all run in the golf depot. So it's just one right now is this company? Correct. Okay. I'm looking here at your budget numbers. The forecast, did you all have an opportunity or something to speak with the golf course? Billy Casper, who we currently have in there. I see you have a number around 2,000. I mean, was that just a guesstimate that you, you all put these numbers up?
Yeah, we really, we really don't have, didn't have much to go on. Have not talked to them. I've, I've been watching council meetings lately just to get, see if I could hear anything about the golf. But it really wasn't discussed on what I watched. So I looked at it from a point of view of the experience of an upscale public golf course with, you have essentially 150 to 200 days a year to play golf. And you have competition in the, in the community. What I was able to, to figure was they're doing about 10,000 rounds of golf.
A month or, or a season?
For the season.
Okay. In, in your numbers, I see you have the total expenses. And that is only for the golf side that you're, you're guessing?
Yes.
Okay. Cause I was going to say, uh, 800,000, that is quite a bit of money that you all would be spending for the golf side, for the golf side. And, uh, you know, I don't know if you know, right now, we spend, our, our village, for what we have now, we have budgeted, uh, pretty much 545,000. And I say that number a thousand times because I was there when I voted for those contracts. So that's just to kind of give you, and that's for both the golf and the restaurant that this village is spending. That's worst case scenario based upon the leasing and the reimbursement. And in fact, I just had a meeting two weeks ago with the restaurant side. I was just sitting in on a meeting with the man, village manager and the, uh, the Crimson Group, the restaurant part in there. And I was just amazed how he, you know, this company was not even asking for money. They were taking money, putting right back. And I, and based upon what I'm listening to your presentation, it sounds like you all are somewhat the same way. And he did it because he wanted to see a predominantly African-American community being a African-American honor, the two gentlemen prosper. So yeah, I just want to see it here, you know, I don't want you going, I see you have your operating net income. You would be losing about a quarter million dollars in revenue here. So on your five-year, what here, you said for the assumption of the golf pro forma. Okay. So this is just, so you're operating your, and actually when you're looking at your total net, close to almost a million dollars in 2025, you, you guys are hoping that, that's quite a bit. You, you do realize, right? Are you, are you just kind of guessing, Steve? I don't mean to put you on the spot. I can see your face.
You know, you're very astute on these numbers and I fully expected it. Just, just so you know, we didn't have a lot to go on. And if you, if you look at the top part of the budget, you'll see probably a higher revenue stream than what you've been receiving. So the fences are kind of in line with, it's going to take additional expenses to get the property, the facility making money. The other thing is, we're in a position where we can cut expenses. It's one of the five things we talked about on utilizing expenses. We don't have to spend 800,000. But if we want to get this property to a point where it's producing money and, you know, I guess if you look at it this way, I also put in dollars for capital expense, 4%. If we can build a presence in the community with the corporations and the businesses, we can get it to a break even and making money at some point. But we hated to over promise and under deliver. We'd rather the opposite.
Yeah, and, and, and I, I don't want you, and I'm being realistic, I hope the trustees are looking at these numbers too. At the peak of this, at the peak of our village, I will say, I'm, I'm not the peak of the village, the peak of the golf course. I would say it, it, it cost the, the village when we were running it ourselves. That number was, I want to say 1.6, that was 2,008 budget. Let me see. I don't have that in front of me. Yeah, yeah. So I, I just kind of want to give you a warning. You know, I know we have numbers here. I am somewhat a numbers guy. I want to make sure that we in the right place because, uh, I didn't see anything about management agreement in here. You all, did I miss that? You didn't all, I mean, not, not that you would, but how much? Did I miss something here or was it a percentage?
We, we allocated dollars under GNA for like a management fee or a management percentage.
Okay. I, I, the reason why I say that is, uh, you know, because this is more of a presentation, correct? This is not the meat of a, okay, this presentation. That's correct. Okay, yeah, okay. So, uh, okay, great. Bear with me. I don't know. If you say you seen boring memes, I'm the one with all the questions. You probably figured that out, right? Just, uh, uh, very quickly, um, I know when it comes to the market, and this is for Jerry Thomas, I really, really would like, uh, how, to find out, how would he be able to repair the relationship we have with Industrial Park? Because right now, I don't know if you know, we, we charge a head tax. And, and they, sometimes I think we, but we want them to be involved, but they have to understand the village was trying to take a different direction. The village financially too, we had to, uh, I, I, I mean, at some point, we probably will drop the head tax. But until then, how would Jerry be able to handle or try to repair that, that tension that Industrial Park has with this, uh, this board? how would Jerry be able to handle or try to repair that that tension that Industrial Park has with this uh this board? Jerry still there?
Jerry? Yeah, he's on there.
He's on there, he's probably muted.
Is muted? Okay. Well, I I'll, I'll drop down to Steve if Jerry, if Jerry pops up, just let me know. Um, the other one is uh, uh, Steve, you didn't get a chance, uh, cuz apparently you all did not get a chance to see, cuz I know you mentioned uh uh getting the facility and uplifting, you didn't get a chance to see. Oh, you here? Let me
Yeah, I don't know what's going on with this technology. I I'm I'm, I never muted the whole time, but it keeps muting. But anyway, I'd like to to take a stab at that. First of all, I think I would, we want to get more details to assess that situation, but I think with anything, I think if their stakeholders are already in the community, it's it's key for us to, with this new team, try to repair any history there and try to move what's forward. It's in the best interest of all of us to figure out how we make this in the best interest of uh, you know, building on this relationship, building on the new possibilities with this golf course. And I think, let us get some more facts, let us understand what's been some of the tension and let's see if we can get people to the, get people to the table and see if we can um, can can get everyone investing in what's the future moving forward. Again, the history of your community is rich, probably richer than most people know. We've got to let people know that the key to achieving this goal is really realizing that vision of your founders and 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 moving it forward. It's been a a a utopia of integration. So I think we just got to rewrite some things, restructure some things, but get everyone in the room and let everyone know this is a new day. There's a new mayor, there's some new, some new trustees, this is an opportunity to go in a whole new direction. So let us study this a little bit and look at some of the pros and cons of it, but that's our role to see if we can get everybody in that room and move everybody forward.
Okay, great, yeah, cuz I I think the head, I think uh, you know, we have a lot to repair. I know a lot of them are kind of upset. Uh, but we have Amazon coming in, you know, some of them I hear complaints, only because I have a couple friends over there and uh I I only kind of know their their disposition of the village because they were very vocal about it, you know. So I I wanted to see how well, when I seen it, uh, how well you would be able to repair it. Uh, Steve, I I just want to jump down into when you were talking about the facelift, did you ever get a chance to see uh our our facility? Um, cuz I know we, I I I I I'mma, I'mma say it to you and trustee Shirley Voggs, she's shaking her head because we just had a deal that came through where we had someone uh for for the, for uh distributing water and what people don't realize is that we we're kind of behind about three, four years of our parking lots being paved and uh certain equipment, we're we're, I'm talking about, our mortgages due and uh, you know, we 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 cutting the grass as much as possible to at least let everybody know that the house looks nice, but uh, did you get a chance to take a look at the driving range across the street and and we got a a parking lot that that really needs a super uplift? Yeah, TLC and and I I don't mean to keep dropping the hammer, but we got a two A C systems in there that need to be fixed and you know, are you, are you ready to to go through the struggle that, you know, this is, this is uh, how could you say, these are, this is, we're surviving, we're we're trying to pull up, but we surviving, but we on a, on a, on a tight uh uh line here.
Those are my concerns too, yeah, yeah, exactly.
And and appreciate your question and uh to answer your question, uh, I've been there twice. Uh, just drove up the facility, it was in the winter one time, uh, actually uh both times, but one time it was snow covered. Uh, actually got out and walked on the golf course, even though there was snow out there, get a feel for it. Uh, did go across the street, uh, the operator there was not there, but we looked, Jerry and I uh went and looked at what was there. Um, I I gotta tell you though, you know, I, we also spent some time over Governor State. Uh, looking at the facility and and uh campus and all and 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 can't wait to build a relationship there. I mean, Jerry Hammond, uh, I mean, it's gonna be amazing with what happens between Governor State, Penny So what you're was about the things that need to get done, make a list of the, we'll, we'll, all of us will develop a plan to address each one of them. And hopefully these corporate partners will help.
Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk?
I just wanted, I just wanted to interject that the driving range across the street is actually owned by Park Forest, not the village. Just so you're clear, okay.
Is there, is it, but is there a relationship there with?
There is, there, there was a relationship with the the young man who who has leased the driving range from Park Forest with us. There is a relationship.
Well, and and the reason I ask because, you know, we've gone through this and I I think um everybody knows you have to learn to play golf. So it's important that you kind of just to feed your golf course. Driving range source of revenue to the boats, uh, to the community to build sorry, groundside. It's beautiful, it's prime, we got a lot of opportunity there. And I mean, we, I would definitely like to come in. I'm actually, actually, believe it or not, we talked about, or my buddy um is a head coach for Howard and there's a young lady, he's recruiting from, so he's actually asked me to start teaching her, you know, uh somehow, some way. And I said, well, you know, there may be an opportunity where, I don't know, but uh, but if you can sit here, that'd be great. So with that being said, you know, there's, there's a relationship with that and Steph Curry uh that's all tied in for this. So I think bring a wealth of resources uh to the table to help you get where you need to go and
I did, I did write that, Jerry, you know what, the mayor probably, he grinned and he grinned, he know I always have a a whole slew of questions. But Jerry, I actually, you can't see good, it's right here, would Jerry, would Jerry come to U P? You know, will, you know, will you be coming to U P? Should we choose you uh to like uh bring that, what we need? I mean, uh, uh, for Steve, just so you know, Steve, I worked for the Bulls in the nineties. So if, i- i- I don't know, I don't know, you came in eight, was if the, if it was the nineties, I probably was the one that delivered your check, you didn't even know. So, you know, uh, uh, but I I would say when it came to the piece of the puzzle, um, you know, like I know, uh, especially with the Bulls, you know, Michael started, then you had uh Scotty, then you had, you know, almost like when we seen The Last Dance, always somebody can be that one key puzzle. And I think University Park, you know, you know, Jerry, I think, you know, are you gonna be part of this puzzle? It should we choose your company to attract the golfers uh uh here to U P?
Make this a destination.
Uh, yeah, I can tell you this, I'll I'll bring life to to University Park. The middle schools, I'll hit Crete Monday, I'll hit uh, what is it, Scott, what's the the Scott King? Um, all the other schools, I mean, and that's, I don't know if that's been done. You know what I mean? There's, there hasn't been that touch, that personal touch to reach out. And I'm telling you, that's how, that's how it all works. I mean, I can only speak, I've, I I'm not, I'm not, I don't want, I'm, I'm a humble guy, but I'll tell you, I have the blueprint. I have the blueprint. And with the team, yeah, we'll get in there and and deliver a product for you.
Go ahead, Madam Clerk, I I see you're here.
Well, you know, at one point, we did have the first T program out here. We also had a a few, quite a few women golf teams that played. I'm one, I'm probably the only member of this board who has been playing in golf. And I I still call it that because I'm not the greatest, but I enjoy. And uh, we have had quite a few of interaction with the kids with the first T program, lot of community things that we have done with uh, and at one point, the village actually leased the driving range from Park Forest before we ran into difficulties and the golf club was shut down for a couple of years and that's when Ernie negotiated with them. So it is something. And we do have a lot of young people out here who are anxious to get back into uh the program.
I think you, uh, Ms. Jones, I think you have, and Steve alluded to this earlier, I think right there with Governors and their golf program, uh, I think that's just, that's prime for the taking.
Right, we did a great
Right.
Governor State.
Whatever has been done, repair that, obviously that university has money as well, so you do some collaborative activations to bring, maybe it's building a new ring, maybe it's building an academy, maybe it's bringing some things to the table that, you know, nobody's ever seen, you know what I mean? But we've got to get in there and and once we get in there and we can get our feet on the ground, then I think we can push the right buttons. And I can bring my resources to the table, be at the U S G A. And I'm actually, I wrote a letter to our president. You know, it was funny, she wrote a letter given this, this George Floyd incident, and she wrote this letter to the membership as if they were now woke. And I'm like, you're not a woke. So, you know, I called her to the table, hey, listen, gonna be anybody that that need to speak for what it is we need, it's gonna be us. And and with that being said, there's, there's a need like University Park to get in there, to develop, to uh offer these opportunities to facilities and and black community. And that's their goal. So I'm gonna call them to the table on that. So, I mean, these are some, a a few of the things that, you know, um, that I'm gonna pull on and retrieve that are at my fingertips. But it's gonna take the hell, it's gonna take the work of, you know, with your
May, can I, can I, let's help to you what you were trying to do?
One, one second, Mrs. Childress, then trustee Williams, then uh Madam Clerk. Mrs. Childress?
Uh, I just wanted to say, Mr. Hampton, I am honored that you are wanting to bring back golfing to the youth because we were partly uh hooked on golf and would bring the day camp children over in the summer. It was part of our package to sell to parents so the young people could learn something new. So it wasn't just your norm of basketball, though everybody on here knows I'm a basketball fan, but off is awesome for them. It gave them the understanding of the technique and what they needed to do. So you can get ready and these trustees say you could come on in, I'm more than welcome to assist you and help you get young people involved.
Appreciate that.
Trustee Williams?
Yes, um, uh, my question is, I want to know the names of your partners that's in this golf course. How long y'all been together?
Um, in the name of what golf course, the one we have here in Columbus?
You, yes, you guys.
Yeah, it's uh, we've had this eight, this one here, we've been managing this eight years and it's the Golf Depot. You know, our partners are Steve Renniker, uh Sonia Coffey, Marcia Leaf.
Okay. And and that's all of you guys, right? Okay.
Madam Clerk?
Uh, Mayor, can I be recognized as the Madam Clerk?
Of course, the Curtis?
Yes, I'll be recognized as the Madam Clerk.
Go ahead, Madam, yes, sir, yes, sir.
Oh, mine was simply basically the same as uh, Ms. Childress. Uh, your presentation has been great. And like I said, I am one who golfs. And whatever information I can impart, I'm here to do it.
I appreciate that, Ms. Jones. And and you know, I do have a program and Marcia Leaf is um one of our avid female golfers on the team, so she would love to get out and tee it up with you. Uh, she was a part of the Ebony Ladies Golf League that we established here.
Oh, really?
Years ago, and now that to other cities and states. So that may be an opportunity where we can kind of establish and uh place a Ebony's Ladies Golf League right there at University Park.
Yeah, because they play ladies played at our golf course for years, they haven't even, every year they the Ebony Ladies. And like I said, we, we can probably look at pulling back together some of the golf leagues that we had there before.
Well, I think I think that, I think that you have a lot of corporations there, the Clorox operation, you have the water uh um corporation there. I think a lot of those, now you got Amazon, I think, you know, we need to in there and and work that hand uh right now if we can get in there. And that's part of what we bring and deliver uh if awarded the contract.
And the other thing I was going to say is that fortunately, when it comes to Governor State, our mayor has established a relationship with Governor State like we've not had before. So I'm sure he would be an asset.
We wanna, we wanna create a new golf tournament for him as well.
Yeah, the mayor, uh, may I be recognized?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, Curtis.
Trustee McMullin is on the line and um before I became a trustee, my daughters were involved in a program, I'm not sure the name of it, but they were given the opportunity to play golf at uh University Park and use that driving range across the s- crossed the way. I don't know, Mrs. Keely, uh, does um, what program was that that gave my daughters an opportunity?
That was the Hooked on Golf. Hooked on Golf.
They gave them, they gave them a whole club of golf, golf club.
Yes, sir.
They gave them a whole package, right? So that was a good program before it was shut down, but gave my daughters an opportunity to play golf if they wanted to.
Exactly.
So it peaks, it peaks and it's wonderful that um you would be able to talk to some of the uh, the children at Credit Scott King and um and um the um two O one U, if possible, if you are elected to um join us in this collaboration with University Park. That would be great.
Yes, sir. And I'm, trustee, and another thing that, uh, just for everybody to know, that two O one U, their golf program actually utilized the golf course years ago.
That's good, that's good.
Is still there. All we have to do is tap into it, get the professionals back in and we can get this started with the young people.
And I think a lot of excitement and I I'll tell you this.
That sounds good.
Yeah, and if awarded a contract, I'll tell you, I I will bring in Cheyenne, Harold, or some, we will bring them in, that's not even a problem. So we'll, we'll, we'll get a game plan together to really put U P on the map.
And I would also note that um uh, you know, with seasonal employment and um going on, we would like to uh recruit locally, so the community can come and work or volunteer for the uh golf course, so it could be all locally.
And Sonia and Jerry.
Oh.
I don't know if you can hear me.
Where, Mr. Thomas?
Yeah.
And then trustee, I said the list. Mr. Thomas?
Yes, I wanted to add, Jerry, I wanted to piggyback on something you were sharing earlier. Um, I work very closely with several members of the championship bulls and I, and I believe with what is transpiring in America right now with all the racial unrest and the, and the whole aspect of moving toward healing, uh, I'm confident that if, you know, with the right team and we've got the right team assembled here, that we can pull some of those bulls in to, to really send out a big endorsement, to really bring some awareness about what's happening with this golf course and University Park. So I know that's something would not be hard to get at the table with some of those guys, like former, you know, co- coach Bill Cartwright and Harz Grant and all those guys, I'm sure we can get a feel of them to really be on board for some kind of marketing efforts for the, for the golf course.
Right. And then I I'll, I'll add a caveat to that is, just so you all know, I have a program, it's called the Top Twenty, that I'm shopping nationally and it's really designed And it's really designed, like I shared with you, I have kind of a blueprint, um, of taking kids from start to finish, uh, be it that just to college, be it make the high school team, or even into the pros. So that blueprint's already in place. And so what I've done is I've combined an S A T A C T component to it with the Huntington Learning Center that's national. So, uh, we, we would love to implement that as well for the, the older kids or, you know, for the younger kids to work up through the ranks to be able to be a part of that program.
Trustee Williams? Unmute yourself, trustee. Unmute, unmute.
Sorry, I'm so sorry.
That's all right.
How long have you guys been together?
Thank you.
Steve and I have been together, like I said, he's my brother from another mother. We've been together for some time now, like twenty seven years. Uh, and then I've been with, um, Marcia, actually just long. Um, so, yeah, we've all been together for, yeah, it's been, yeah, it's been some time.
I was talking about the group, like, like I asked before.
Yeah, the group, so our group is, is our group collectively, we have been together. But as far as formally and managing golf courses, we've been together about a year. But we combined efforts, they've been together and we've come together to combine one, one team.
Okay, that's what I was, you know, trying to figure out, how long have you guys been together? So you said about a year?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Okay, may I be recognized? Yeah, uh, don't mean to be no damp, but I'm always going right back into some numbers. That's just me. Uh, quick question, can you all, is it, uh, and I know this is a presentation, but can you just give me, is it possible to send, uh, I have, I have, if you go to the website, if you can just send me a link of, if you can just tap some numbers in for me to see, and say if you did the restaurant portion as well. Now, what you saying, the numbers you gave me would be for the golf side, if you managed the golf side? Or, uh, how, what, what numbers were, that you gave me here that I'm looking at? So I can have a clear, clear idea of what I'm discussing here.
You just received the golf.
Okay.
Not include the food, although we have internally done a budget and a performance with food and beverage included.
Yeah, I seen that, okay.
And, and one other point on that was Clorox and Amazon. We've got a great opportunity. You host some big events with them and, and big partnerships. It, you know, we were talking about improvements. You know, if we do a couple of events, you know, really keen on Clorox and Amazon, I think we could generate some money to do some of that. Plus, it'll really drive the food and beverage and the golf participation. So we can get you those numbers if you'd like, for sure.
Okay, and when you say for Clorox and Amazon, are you saying in general, like, as far as corporate type of outings or, um, what, what type of outings are, are you structured? Cause right now, the, the, I guess, it's two separate events, like, uh, what the two companies is up there, the one that's up there, he mostly hold weddings, so forth, all the things that you're gonna do, including political events. Uh, I don't know what Billy Casper Group is doing, but, uh, you know, I just wanna make sure, uh, cause when I did see the restaurant portion, he was booked all the way up until September for, uh, his event. I don't know what the golf and if, Matt, I meant to send you an email, um, Madam Village Manager, she'll tell you, I, I, I'm always, uh, what she say, her unique trustee, I'm always asking for something. So if I can just find out, um, are you going to be able to get those accounts? I mean, can we, cause I'm saying that today, this is June, you know, I wanna make sure, cause when I'm looking at your, when I'm looking here, the, the rounds of golf go, well, the rounds of golf, we probably have about one, two, three, four good months left of, of golf. You know, and I'm just saying, not saying that if you had got it, but I'm just saying, uh, we wanna speak realistically of, of what we're looking at. Cause, uh, we haven't done our budget yet, so.
Yeah.
You know, I wanna make sure that, uh, uh, everything before we, you know, is, is in line, yes.
Well, give an example of something that can happen. We did, we came up with the idea of having fireworks here. And, you know, that may not sound like a big deal. We called it Boot Fest, we gave money to charity, and we had six thousand people show up to watch fireworks. And we got ten different companies that paid, well, our title sponsor was twenty five thousand dollars. And, and it was amazing. I'm not saying we can get twenty five thousand there, but I think we have a good shot at it because we've done the model of it. And, uh, it, it was just such a great time. We had a band, actually tried to get Stevie Wonder, and he was booked. So that was my goal, cause I thought we could have got a lot more money if I could have got Stevie to this property. But, uh, you know, those are examples, uh, trustee Brooks. So we, you know, we wanna come up with some ideas, something different.
Okay, uh, uh, before I yield my time, I just wanna say thank you for the presentation. Uh, uh, please understand, uh, University Park, um, we, we have our challenges. I'm gonna tell you the truth. Maybe about, uh, the first week after I was sworn in, I came home. My first special meeting was on a Friday. And when I came home, I asked myself, what the hell I just got into? But the mayor laughed, and we done had this conversation. We, 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 we done came a very, very long way. Uh, you know, so I wanna make sure, and I, and I know trustee, uh, Shirley Bowman is another one. She always say it too, just please, please, please understand, uh, you know, I know this, this would be your first project, you all been together for a year. University Park, we have, like you said, we're diamond, but that diamond need, you know, we gotta keep, keep running some things off there.
Yeah, we need a lot of polishing.
Yeah, yeah, so we're almost there. And I would like to say to Sonia, uh, I would like to say, uh, uh, in the midst of all those things, I am a, a retired disabled police officer. I was injured in the line of duty. Uh, the reason why I was injured, because I practiced the holds that we are trained in academy. It was unf, it was unfortunate. The gentleman was a schizophrenic. He tore my back out. I have, uh, 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 force rules, two, uh, two plates and rods holding my back together. And before I did that, I was a, a happy detective slash police officer swinging golf clubs here. It was the most stress relieving thing I've ever encountered. And I was doing it once I had got promoted, but unfortunately, I can't do it no more. Uh, but I would like to say, as an African American woman, it was nice to see an African American woman on the, uh, presentation here, uh, 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 as a president and a founder, and presenting something to us. That shows that we have come a long way. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
I'm not gonna talk no more, I yield my time.
Back, trustee Franklin, yes, sir.
Sure, Steve.
No, he ain't done, cut it out.
No, he told me that.
Be back. I wanna say, uh, I wanna say thank you all for the presentation. Um, I really liked the, the fact that it was youth, that you approached it from a, uh, focusing on a youth standpoint, because I believe that's extremely important. Um, also the fact that, um, in so many black communities, golf has been stereotyped and categorized as a white sport. So if we can be strategic on finding ways to get our youth involved in a community, I think that would be extremely, uh, extremely positive. Also, it's something that really stood out to me, uh, throughout the presentation. That's the fact that there was a statement, there was a statement saying that the golf course can become a center for healing. And when we think about post, uh, COVID nineteen, uh, this in the country, not only our community, but the country is gonna be in a state where healing is gonna be very necessary. I know that, I know that, um, golf has a therapeutic aspect to it. And I'm, I'm really, I'm really, um, looking to learn about more ways that we can incorporate the healing aspect of golf as it relates to our children in the, in the school district. When we talk about the idea of developing the whole child, there's always this aspect of, uh, social emotional learning that we have to figure out, uh, ways to address. And I, and I, and, and, and listening to the presentation, I see opportunities for us to, um, not only use the golf course for a sporting, um, location, but it, it can also potentially be used for mentorship and, and, and use it as a healing process for our community and children. So that's what I would be more interested in learning about, how we can not only, not only, um, uh, have it as, as for sporting events, but also use it as a multi-purpose type of facility. I think the presentation was very, uh, very well organized, um, outside of the, the, the numbers. Um, if I can offer, uh, some advice, I would say that it's when, when you're dealing with communities who have, have had so many broken promises, that this is something that we don't take lightly. And this is something that we have to get right. Um, the, when, when the numbers were presented, there's no, without, without really doing thorough research, there's no way to really predict, there's no way to really present numbers that, that can be realistic. Um, and, and, and I think that's an, an important point to make. Um, we're all, we're, we're all optimistic that the numbers that were presented can be, you know, we can reach those numbers, but there's a reality that this is, this is gonna be a challenge on, on your end and on our end as well. Because if we do allow you to come in, uh, we wanna make sure we're making the right decision for our community. Um, just to kinda echo what other, what the other colleagues have mentioned, we're in a position where we're headed in the right direction, but we, we don't have room to make wrong decisions at this point. This is an extremely important decision that we're making. And, uh, we would, we would definitely entertain more conversation and more proposals and more ideas and more solid figures and numbers moving forward, as I'm sure there'll be more companies and organizations that are gonna be interested as well. So I just wanna thank you all for, for the presentation. And, uh, like I say, I, I really appreciate you, uh, looking at this thing from the standpoint of our children and also looking at the golf course from the standpoint of, of opportunity to promote healing in our community.
I appreciate that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I, and I, I'll say this lastly, I don't know, um, there's, there's a couple of things. I, I know one of the question was how long we've been together. I don't want you to confuse our, our, our one-year form, formed relationship as a, a lack of experience. Um, I, I just know that's been asked a lot. So, uh, we have years of experience and professionalism in the industry, in the golf industry, in the management, in the teaching, and the whole nine. So, uh, I do wanna make that a point, because I know that was a question, and I didn't know how that question was directed. But I wanted to share that. And lastly, I would challenge each of you to kind of go back through the deck and look. Uh, you'll see it, some of the pictures, you'll see, um, Anthony Anderson, you'll see what we bring to the table. One of my, one of the young men in that picture, um, is one of my young men that played in the P J Championship. And like I shared with you earlier, um, we, we have a lot to bring to the table. He and I were the first black duo teacher-player inside the ropes. Uh, it's never been done before. He was the first black player to ever make it to the P J Championship, a national at that, a national event on the tour, um, through the P P C, through the club pro. So I, I, I just wanna reiterate that I, I understand you and, and I, and I'm just as, uh, thoughtful and mindful of this opportunity, and I'm not here to let you down. I know what I do, uh, but we're gonna need some help. We're, we're gonna need to, we're gonna need, we're gonna need you guys.
And so I would like, um, thank you, um, Mayor Rudes, Village Trustees, um, for allowing us to present to you. And, um, know that, uh, C H W Management Group is built on integrity and transparency. You will get all that. Um, and we have one last thing, if we would, Steve would like to say something, please.
I know you don't know me and, and I don't know you, uh, but, you know, when we came together two nights ago, we were gonna have this presentation, and I listened to you, uh, say the pledge of allegiance. And I was thinking about it driving home. Uh, so last part of the pledge of allegiance is liberty and justice for all, and you all said it. And I got thinking to myself, if, if I hadn't been free with fairness or justice in my life, could I say that? I don't know, I don't know that I could. So I really wanna celebrate you on a personal level, on a personal basis. Thank you. And, you know, for me personally, I'm hoping this is an opportunity to make a positive difference in something that's a lot more important than running a golf course. So I just wanted to share that with you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
We appreciate it.
I wasn't gonna say nothing, cause Tutu said I ain't too.
I know you want to, you are.
You promised, holding you to that.
Okay.
Thank you guys all, and, um, hope you have a wonderful night and, uh, hope to hear from you soon.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good night.
All right, Mayor, I don't think it's anything on, else on there. I'll make the most into adjourn unless you have something else.
No, I'm just gonna say, I'd like to say to everyone, thank you for making it possible to have this presentation by us being interrupted by the storms. And thank everybody for taking time out of their busy schedule, their families to spend a few hours with us, doing what we gotta do for our community.
Okay. Okay, Mayor, Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, trustee, yes.
I'm glad.
So, then just wanted to tell the gentleman that asked, uh, how was my question directed? Why? I just wanted to know how long they've been together. That's, that's, that's the norm, you know? Just wanted to know that. There was no harm intended, and I hope it was none taken.
No, no, ma'am, thank you for your question.
Mm-hmm. Well, thank you.
So.
A second, your.
Second by trustee Williams, all in favor?
Aye.
On both?
Aye.
Enjoy your weekend, it'll be very nice this weekend, see you guys at the parade on Saturday and at the cleanup day.
Oh, that's right.
See you later.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Paul.
Good evening, everyone.